It is very cramped. I grew very accustomed to this. The 60th separation that we had had.
There's actually one of the fallouts of this whole COVID stuff.
Starting to argue some more. If you're coming up, coming up. If you're coming up with markets, it's 35 right. There's some reason why it always is 35 or always in 25. See if we can watch. Why not? I mean, it's a, it's a, it's a central transportation. Through the township and. They're rolling the dice. And your guys, if you say I'm your, you're going to.
Nice to meet you. Yes, yes. They have a temporary license. For good till August, so I'm assuming that's just paperwork.
She gonna talk to her.
Yeah, same here. Sorry, I meant went blank there.
All this stuff you have the prison needs for, is that the only stuff you need shared?
I got it all.
Went to your mailbox.
I can pull, yeah.
Been a whole month since.
How are you? So Mark Stanley out there. In the lobby, I think this is the first time he's making a public.
I'm saying, why isn't my mouse working? It is right here because it's not the right mouse.
I don't think so. I don't know.
There's not even much we gotta take action.
You know what you just did, right? You just jinxed us.
What did you say? I don't want that. I don't want to know. I don't want your.
She does exist in person.
That's Mark Stanley actually. Can I get three minutes with you?
Yes, Wallace.
Okay.
Is another attorney at these walls, he's gonna be doing his presentation for their rezoning request.
Michael. Kim's doing a lot of lessons.
Yeah, and that's who we got with the power.
Bring the opening statements. Think I've done enough times I can probably get most of it by memory.
Evening. I'd like to welcome you to Easthamfield Township Board of Supervisors meeting. Tonight's meeting has been advertised to be both held in person and on Zoom. For those of you that are contact reaching us on Zoom, I encourage you to make sure you have your video and your mics on mute. For those that wish to participate in the meeting via Zoom, you must first acknowledge acknowledgement from a representative and township that you wish to speak in the chat line. Upon acknowledgement, I will acknowledge you and you'll be able to opportunity to speak. At that time, your microphone will be unmuted. You become an opportunity to speak and then upon completion of your speaking, your microphone will be muted. Any violations of those policies will result in you being removed from the meeting. For in the meeting itself, we will be following Robert's rules. And so with that, I'd like to start off with a moment assigned on the pledge. Please rise. Now the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Maybe see it. Forgot to also mention that tonight's meeting is being recorded and the recordings will be posted on our website, so everybody's been duly warned. So with that, we are going to be opening up the first items of our agenda. We have a number of hearings to start off with tonight's meeting. The first hearing is for Lime Spring Square lots one and two and it's a rezoning Embassy Drive. And with that, I'm going to turn this over to our solicitor.
Okay, good evening. So this is a somewhat informal hearing. We don't have a court reporter here tonight, but we will begin by having the applicant make a presentation to the board as to what they are seeking. You do have a proposed ordinance that has been advertised for adoption this evening if you are willing to consider it. Once the presentation is done, you will have an opportunity as a board to ask questions and then open it up for public comment and any questioning. At the conclusion of the hearing, you will then be able to take action on your ordinance. And I see that it's on the agenda for later in the evening.
So I'll turn to applicant. The floor is yours.
I'm Peter Wertz. Peter Wertz with me, Nies Wallace and Eric, here with Mike O'Brien, 206 Roerstown Road, and I believe Chris Van Archek with RGS Associates is conferencing in via Zoom. The parcel that is the subject of this rezoning petition is an 11.2 acre property located north of Embassy. Property is located in the township's enterprise zone and is part of the Lime Spring Square mixed use development that is built out to the east along Roerstown Road. By way of a chronology, petitioner submitted the instant petition on April 16th, 2021. On April 21st, the board accepted, acknowledged the petition and referred it out to the Township Planning Commission and LCPC. On May 12th, the Township Planning Commission recommended approval and on June 14th, LCPC recommended approval. We're here tonight to request approval of the petition and adoption of the proposed rezoning ordinance. And before I get into the background of the request, I'd like to just pass out an exhibit of the current configuration of the property. Thank you. Thanks. On the projector is exhibit B to the petition. As you can see, the eastern border of the subject property, which extends a little bit up this area where it's blocked, extends down and the eastern border of the property is adjacent to a 4.4 acre tract, which is located in the regional commerce center zone, and that tract is also owned by petitioner in this matter. A petitioner is proposing to consolidate two properties and develop the consolidated property as part of Lime Spring Square. To that end, on July 12th, petitioner had submitted a land development and lot consolidation plan. Currently, the boundary line between the enterprise zone and regional commerce center zone tracks the shared lot line of the subject property and the adjacent property. Accordingly, following the lot consolidation, the property is going to be split zoned. And as you can see, one of the proposed buildings is located right where the former lot line was, and that's where the current zoning boundary is. So what petitioner is proposing to do is simply to shift the current zoning boundary west. And you can't really see it too well because it's shading's not showing up too well on this exhibit, but west. So it is outside of the area that is going to be improved by the building. And this is necessary to facilitate the development of the building under a uniform set of zoning regulations. It's also going to move the zoning boundary to a more logical position because it will at least track this. This property is a separate property here. It'll track the lot line of this property up until this lot ends. And then it will be split zoned across petitioner's property. Finally, following consolidation of the properties, it's petitioner's intent to impose a site condominium on the property. And that site condo is going to reflect the proposed zoning boundary. So essentially the shaded area, and I have bigger exhibits here if you can't see that too well to show the extent of the rezoning, that would be helpful. But the shaded, the shaded area would be rezoned from Enterprise to RCC. Any questions?
None yet. None.
Questions?
Yeah. So you have anything more to present at this point or?
That's the extent of it, yes.
Okay, good. Any general questions of the board at this point for that?
I guess the only question I'd have is what, if any, impact would this rezoning have on other development within the township?
None. This is, this is exclusively for this property alone. Both the properties are owned by the petitioner. It's simply to facilitate the lot consolidation and the development. And to make sure that that building, which is proposed right now, would not be bisected by two different sets of zoning regulations because that'll really complicate things.
Okay. Thank you.
I have nothing. Any other questions to the board?
None. No.
Any questions from the audience at this point? Ms. Jacobson, you gotta come to the mic and state your name, please.
I'll lean Jacobson 2009 Chapel Ford's drive. How many, you say condos? Did he, is it going to be converted into condos?
No, condominium is not, it doesn't mean condo units though.
Excuse me?
It's not condo units. It's just how it goes under separate two buildings that are proposed.
Oh, okay. So it's not going to be resident. Oh, okay. I just misunderstood then. Thanks.
Any other questions from the audience? Ms. Garber, is anybody online?
Ms. Garber is not here this evening, but no, there's not.
There's not? Who's running it tonight? Oh, you're doing dual duty. Okay. So I'll just look at you, Mr. Beckon, if you're here. Okay, so scene nine, and you have concluded your testimony. We got no questions to the board, no questions to the public? Okay, so with that, we'll entertain a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Okay, motion for Mr. Wigglesworth to have a second.
Second.
Second from Mr. Bennett. Ms. Switzer, please poll the board.
Mr. Weaver.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
Mr. LaFever.
Aye.
Mr. Wigglesworth.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye, the ayes have a five to nothing. Tell you what, it's gonna confuse me after all these months of having everybody else at different locations about listening where people's voices are coming from. Okay, so with that, we're now going to move on to the second hearing. And this is for the Lime Springs Beverage Liquor License Transfer, Transfer for 320 Roerstown Road. And again, I will turn it over to our solicitor.
Okay, so this is another public hearing. This time you have a resolution to approve a intermunicipal transfer of a liquor license. The applicant is represented by counsel. We'll make a presentation. You'll then have a chance to ask questions. Again, open it up for public comment and then at that point you may close your hearing.
Okay, thank you. Floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Kim Salumba. I'm here representing Lime Springs Square Beverage LLC, also here with Mike O'Brien, Representative. We're here today to seek a resolution from this township to approve the intermunicipal transfer of this liquor license. And that's restaurant license R13203 for our location at 320 Roerstown Road, Lancaster, PA 17603. This license will be located within a commercial center named the Lime Spring Square Square Center. For the board's convenience, I do have color photos.
We could just pass it.
What those photos depict is an overhead view of the location of where the proposed license is intended to be. And it does show a measurement to the closest building that the liquor control board will ultimately consider, and that's an elementary school. The liquor code prohibits, or strike that, the liquor code gives the liquor control board discretion to deny a license if it's located within 300 feet of a church, a school, or a public playground. As submitted in the application to get on this agenda, we did identify the closest licensed areas, schools and churches, and none of them are located within that discretionary 300 feet. Again, this license is coming in from Efforta and the liquor code does require first, a resolution from the township approving the transfer into Easthamfield before we can then apply to the liquor control board for approval of that transfer.
Which restaurant is this for?
I'm sorry, it is going to.
The tenant's not ready to be announced or is? Okay, sit down.
Sit down food, restaurant focused hours from Monday through Thursday, 9:00 a.m. till 9:00 p.m., Friday and Saturday, 9:00 a.m. to 11:30. So those extremely late hours, even though allowed by the liquor code.
Any other questions to the board?
None for me.
Any questions from the audience? Ms. Jacobson, come state your name again for the record.
Address the vacant restaurant that's there now.
I see Mr. O'Brien nodding his head behind you.
Yes.
Okay, any other questions? Well, it's Mr. Beckon, anybody online?
No, sir.
Okay. Do you have anything more to present at this point?
No, I don't. That's the end of my presentation.
Okay, I guess we go through the table and close this hearing. So entertain a motion to close the hearing. Okay, most from Mr. Bennett. I'll hear a second.
Second.
Second from Mr. LaFever. Ms. Switzer, please poll the board.
Mr. Weaver.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
Mr. LaFever.
Aye.
Mr. Wigglesworth.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye, the ayes have a five to nothing. Thank you. So next, the next of our presentations, this one is going to be actually a public presentation, not a hearing. It's Walks Works for the Harrisburg Corridor Study. We have Mrs. Warren from David Miller Associates who will be here to go over the study results and to educate us on what has occurred to date.
Hi, good to see you.
Yes, good to see you again.
Last time I was in here was October last year. So I'm from David Miller Associates. If some of you have probably only seen me through email, correspondence through email. I'm the consultant working specifically on the Walks Works Plan, the Active Transportation Plan. We applied to the Walks Works program last year and we were awarded, the township was awarded $20,000 to develop the plan. So we're in the throes of it and the plan should be adopted by the end of September. So this is kind of the public comment process. John, do you have?
We're working on it.
Okay, thank you.
We're going back and forth.
So I'm gonna, I'll just keep saying switch just because it's there. So the funding was provided by the PA Department of Health. I want to stress that because there are elements of the plan that have to address increased activity and creating connections in your community because of the funding source, which isn't hard to do in the Landisville based on the preliminary analysis. The project area is two and a half miles from Cooper Ave in Landisville to State Road divided into two sections. So the majority of the effort is focused on the center of Landisville and that's Harrisburg Pike Main Street. And there's a lot of different physical characteristics along that corridor. So it's broken up, you'll see that it's broken up even further for finite detail because it's just so difficult to address it, the physical characteristics as a whole. So it, the plan will be broken up in several areas. If you want to switch to the next one. So this slide is just a quote from PennDOT. Because your project area is a PennDOT roadway, this project not only has to be consistent with the Walks Works PA Department of Health goals, but also with PennDOT. And so PennDOT has been actively involved in the review of recommendations because, you know, I make recommendations if PennDOT says no right off the bat. So there is a strong movement in PennDOT to have more active transportation plans and implementation in municipalities. So it's not a stretch by any means to eventually see these implement, these elements implemented. For the goals of the Active Transportation Plan for Landisville, number one is to provide a safe connection. There's a lot of destinations within Landisville. It's not just a linear roadway to get from one, one source to another destination, but really create those connections. You do have several businesses in the center of Landisville. You have a huge complex at State Road with Penn State being developed with large employee, numbers of employees. And, and the opportunity to create the recreation and the destinations. You also have a transit route in that location. So getting employers potentially to businesses and residents to recreation. You know, here at the park is a good example. And then the, the other goal, the active transportation is to provide the safe connections. When we were looking at the roadway, there's just some minor details like crosswalks aren't, aren't painted. They were at one point, they've been worn down. There's potentially not a light, you know, a push button to cross over. There's a narrowness and some topography. When you come out of Landisville coming east, you kind of go over the rise of the dentist and it narrows and it's difficult and there's no sidewalks. That's exactly where the sidewalk, well, a portion of sidewalk that's in poor condition ends and then, but you do see people walking and biking along that. So how do we address that? And then the last part of this act of transportation is to determine, determine the implementation method. So whether it's enforcement of ordinances to improve sidewalks or seeking additional grant monies or budgeting it for, for your capital improvement plans, all those are options on the table to, to create the implementation. So the contents of the plan, it's pretty clear. We have to follow kind of the cookbook from Walkworks. I already mentioned, we're going to identify specific projects, a suggested timeline, so short, medium and long term. The stakeholder group that, that assisted in this, this development of the plan really wanted to see the low hanging fruit addressed early. You know, can you get out there and make some improvements, but then in the long run, can you, you know, negotiate with PennDOT to put bike lanes in there, painted bike lanes, additional crosswalks, that sort of thing. So that's why we broke it into bite sized pieces for developing the strategy. Some preliminary cost estimates, but really the funding options. There's so many options based on the Walkworks program to go out and look for additional funding. Walkworks will actually help you by providing letters of support because we were, the township was recipient of the funding originally for the plan. They would like to see a review schedule, so whether or not you agree to have the stakeholders group continue to meet or as a whole, which is a diverse cross section of the community, including the rec, the chief, the school district. Some of you were invited, PennDOT, as I mentioned. They suggest that the stakeholder group meet maybe annually or quarterly because their Walkworks will continue to, they've been very active biweekly meetings with us, that they will continue to contact you because they want to see how you're implementing. So you may be hearing from them at least twice annually, just as a, you know, what, what are you doing with this plan? They don't want to see, you know, as the old history of doing a plan and you do the plan, you finish it, you put it on the shelf. They really want to see that you're moving forward with it. And the other piece is the metrics. So as part of the final plan, there'll be metrics like number of miles of proposed new sidewalks, curbs. You know, all different types of numbers of folks for biking, all these metrics. And those are just benchmarks that you can use moving forward so that as you're going for funding, you can use those, that language to enhance your proposal to any funding options. And next. So just a quick summary, the project was funded the beginning of this year. It's a quick turnaround. It's a 12 month turnaround. When we were, when the township was awarded, we did have an internal meeting with staff in October and just kind of did the lay of the land, you know, what does it look like? And then we assembled the stakeholder group, as I mentioned, a diverse group, and they met in March and we've been kind of moving through the different elements. We did do a survey, both a residential survey online and a business survey in person. I would, the survey did really well. There was over 370 respondents to the online survey on Survey Monkey and 250 written comments, which is, you know, I never see people taking the time to actually say something as opposed to click, click, click right through it. It was probably a three or four minute survey, but people actually did take the time to put comments in there. And we, many of you got, I think you sent the survey results to everyone. So you can read through the multiple pages of all the comments, but I think that there's a common thread that they want safe, walkable sidewalks and connections to other destinations like the school district and the shopping areas and the new hospital. So it, it helped reaffirm our original concepts and ideas about this area and just really solidify that for, for the stakeholder group. We went out and we, we got 12 business surveys. They were less enthusiastic about biking and walking because most of the destinations are by car. But they understood, so now they, they can, they heard the vernacular of active transportation and making connections. So hopefully we educated some of your businesses, business owners on options. And I think that they would embrace some improvements in the area. They just can't, they don't see the concept because they have a parking lot or on street parking right now. But if you're putting crosswalks in and benches in and creating a more invited and aesthetically pleasing area, they certainly would see the benefit of that. So that was in May. We're currently in the final development stages and public comment. The boards were in lobby, we had to break it into, because it's such a large linear area, we broke it into three different maps with some callouts for potential improvements, which each of these areas are broken up by the tier. So tier one is from Cooper to Nissley and tier two is from Nissley to State Road. The stakeholder group thought it would be helpful to break it down even further from in your tiers, you'd break it down into zones. So kind of your, your low hanging fruit, your zones, one in tier one would be sidewalk, curb and sidewalk improvements, for example. Kind of your tier two, tier, zone three would be create that total pedestrian linear path. But that's kind of, that's your long term. So that just, it was easier to do that, to break it up into different timelines and segments. But so.
Can't read it, but it's moving.
So, you know, really some of the things, the policy things would be you're, you do have a solid sidewalk ordinance. It's just when they're not, you know, how and when and why and in what circumstance you would enforce that ordinance for sidewalks to be improved. enforce that ordinance for sidewalks to be improved, for sidewalks to be improved. At what point does township step in like you have in other projects and help assist them? Or you make it as part of the surfacing, the resurfacing project that's on the tip in four or five years. So it could be something that could get wrapped into a PennDOT project down the road. The ADA connections we did when we were out doing our site walk, we noticed at some locations like at the street to the pool, you don't have the detectable ADA ramps. And so those are obviously some improvements that would be suggested. And then the bike lane. So we know that this is an active bike route. It's been identified by PennDOT, but there, I think there's one sign, but no on share the road signs on the ground. So that could be an easy fix with working with PennDOT since it's already been identified by the PennDOT. So right now, like I said, we're in the, just a quick wrap up here. We're at the final stages of putting together the recommendations with the stakeholder group. We're breaking it into the tiers and the zones. And then each kind of the short, medium and long term within each of those zones. So there's a lot of specificity. It's almost like a cookbook. We hope that you can go and peel things out as needed and either for your planning purposes, your budgeting purposes, or like I said, grant funding as it comes available. There's, there's, you know, county funding, there's state funding and obviously some federal funding that would, that would apply that you could put into this program. So that's all I had for tonight. I just wanted to make sure you guys were all on this, in the loop. Talked to many of you already and interested in this plan, this planning document based on the comments. So we're hoping to have the draft to Cindy in the next few weeks. And then back before you in the, your second meeting in August to wrap it up before September.
Thank you.
Do we have knowledge of PennDOT planning to repave, reconstruct areas of Main Street in the near future or in the future?
So as far as I know, when I was doing the grant application, it was on the tip for resurfacing Main Street. And I think it was in five, so it would have been 2025. It's already, it's already on the list for resurfacing. And that's just, you know, within the travel lanes, the resurfacing, it doesn't touch the curbs and sidewalks.
You, you know that that's a factor because we've set a precedent on Church Street that might come to play if they were going to want curbs and sidewalks. They leave them to us.
That's been my experience as well.
That's what how PennDOT paved it the last time. They just went along the white lines and ignored the curb and the paving that was beyond the white line. We tried to get them to actually pave the whole roadway, not just between the two white lines last time. So it's going to take a little effort.
Well, that's certainly something that we can, if you would like me, we could put that in as a comment that, that, that the entire road system is addressed as it's moving.
Yeah.
The 50 foot right away. And like I said, the physical characteristics are different in every way.
It would be helpful if we could have a survey of what sidewalks are acceptable and good shape? What needs replaced?
We did do that. I actually did go out and walk and went parcel by parcel. So charity in our office has put together a map. We have every parcel that has, it's in poor condition. So it'll be included in the, the planning document as well.
Maybe talk with the public works group.
Yep.
Yes, that, that would be a, an item for us.
Provide that information to us, that would be helpful. We'll get started on thinking of how to help implement that.
So we broke it into poor condition and non-existent. And that's kind of from the top of the hill all the way down to State Road. It's, you, there are no sidewalks at that point.
I'd speculate about 33% are acceptable and the rest would need something.
Now, when you say from the top of the hill, or is that, is one, does that go all the way down to Stony Battery? Or where do you, you stop at Cooper? I think the study was
Yeah, we had, because of the funding limitations, we had to define the area. So it's really just that center part of Landisville. But as you go west, it's not actually as bad as going east.
No, it's just a couple of areas where there's gaps and stuff.
There are gaps.
Any other discussion on the board?
None for me.
Good. Okay, anybody from the audience? Sir, come on. Just for the record, you guys, we know who you are, but you guys state your name.
Doug Rupp. Give me an example on State Road. And you, you're talking about stakeholders. Are they the businesses along State Road?
So we're talking, we're not actually engaging any of the property owners on State Road. That was the endpoint of the project area.
Oh, yeah, it's Harrisburg Pike.
So it's Harrisburg Pike and it ends at State Road. And this, yeah, so the stakeholders were just a planning group that got together. So it included some of the supervisors, the chief of police, the rec department, the school department. Yeah.
I thought they were business owners, the way you put it.
Right. So we did do a business survey so that we, but it was really Senator Landisville.
Okay, so you're talking sidewalks like along Main Street where there are none.
Correct. Well, there are some, they're just in bad condition.
Well, like I'm thinking going down the hill from Landisville going east to dentist office up here. There's no sidewalks. Are you going to recommend sidewalks in there?
There, it, there will be a recommendation, but it's an alternate one and an alternate two. So an alternate one would be to complete the entire sidewalk network down to Nissley Road. Alternate two would be to take pedestrians into the neighborhood from Amos River Park on the trails and then connect over towards the pool and then back on on a Main Street. So it's difficult because of sight, sight lines and the topography is very bad. But people walk it, you, you see especially like on your Memorial Day event, you know, people are walking. So it does happen, but it's an event, so people are usually driving slower. But it's, it's, it's a difficult path for sure to put in that sidewalk in that location.
It's very steep at the dentist office.
It is, yeah. So there's some cut and fit, yeah, yeah, for sure. It's more difficult.
Talking from State Road, the end this way, where's the beginning up?
Cooper Ave.
Oh, Cooper Ave.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay, any other questions from the audience? Anybody on Zoom? Okay, any last questions for the board? So Warren, thank you. And I'm sure the public works group will be in touch.
Thank you.
Now, next item on our agenda, okay, here is another presentation. This one is for enterprise fleet management. It's our client review from Marcy Walls. I see Marcy right there. So Marcy, the floor is yours.
What do you think? So again, my name is Marcy Walls. I am your dedicated client strategy manager. So my role is to do active planning with the departments as well as an annual review. At that point, really just kind of show you, if you recall, gosh, two years ago now, we sat down and proposed a plan and what that looks like to start to replace your vehicles through the enterprise leasing program. And at this point, we just want to take a look and see where we're at. Did the numbers make sense and how does it look kind of going forward? So I have the agenda up there, but the first part, we're going to start out with just a fleet review showing you where the spend is because the spend doesn't exactly align with the tenure model because we have to do a little bit of assumptions there. So show you where that's at. We'll show you the original model that I looked at as well as an updated to date model and then open it up for any questions. If you have any questions through the presentation, just stop me and let me know. So the first part here is a little hard to read. But what this is going to do is it's going to show you your spend in the categories that are enterprise driven. So your lease expense and you would tag entitling and then your overall expense. This is again, a little bit different than whenever we look at the tenure model. I just wanted to note that. So vehicles deliver at different times throughout the year, depending on when they're manufactured. This is just going to show you what your actual spend was in calendar year 2020. And then what we'll do year over year is we'll take a look at how that spend changes from one year to the next. And eventually the goal would be that you will plateau at the highest spend that you could, which is all your vehicles being on the program. And then the following year is when we start to potentially look at cycling vehicles. That's where we'll actually see that spend category put either stay the same or in our hopes, go down by cycling into newer vehicles. The next part here is just going to show where your model year is. So what the average model year is and was basically before enterprise. So before, I believe I can see that it's your prior model year average was 2013. Is that correct, Cindy?
Yes.
Okay, so before enterprise came along, the average model year you had on your vehicles was about a 2013. Cycling out your vehicles, you're up to, thank you so much, a
2016.
2016. So we are getting newer vehicles for you, which was the goal. And again, the, the goal is going to eventually be that your vehicles are about three to five years old, no older than that. So that we actually cycle out of a vehicle when it has the, the best value, which is no more than five years. So the next slide here is going to show your, this is the original presentation. You probably recall seeing this. And what it looked like is where the top part is where you were. So, you know, current fleet of vehicles, we broke this down into two segments. We broke it down into basically non ERV or emergency response vehicles. And then the ERV vehicles, just because they had a different kind of layout for them. The ERV vehicles were a little bit of a different cycle as well as had significant aftermarket costs put into them. So this shows what it looks like to replace the non emergency response vehicles. And it was basically a cycle of nine recommended, then three, one, two, six. And then that's the first five years. That would be the goal is to get out of your vehicles in five years and then actually cycle them all over again in the next five years. The total 10 year savings was roughly $34,000 getting out of those vehicles. And what I'll do is whenever we get to the next two slides, I'll show you where we predicted you would be and then where you actually landed with enterprise costs. So the next.
No, it's not. I'm getting educated.
So this is the, again, the non ERV. And when we go over to the ERV, which is the emergency response vehicles, which is the next slide then.
Okay, non ERV, that's not what you want.
The next one's ERV.
Okay.
There we go. This is going to be the ERV vehicles. And again, the same, same idea of the plan, again, getting out of five, three, two, then one, shifting those vehicles over again in five years. So the savings on this side was north of $300,000. So significant savings to basically take all of the money you were putting upfront down on ERV vehicles, which are not the cheapest vehicles out there once they're outfitted and actually putting them onto a little bit of a cycle and extending that cost over a lease period. Then the next slide here.
Why does the arrow work? Because it's not. I don't know how to move it.
What are you trying to do?
Advance the slide.
An emergency response vehicle. So your police interceptors.
I was going to ask that too.
Sorry about that. They're your police vehicles. So they're all of your, your emergency response vehicles is your utility interceptors or the, the fun police cars they get to drive around. So what I did is again, taking this and showing what the, the expected was versus what the outcome was. So if you take a look here, there's three lines. The first line is that yellow line. That's where you were previous to enterprise. So on that top model is the non emergency vehicles. Those are your admin vehicles, your public works vehicles. You're purchasing on average two a year and your spend was about 53,000, just two, two pickup trucks. For example, you had no lease cost. There was no equity in the vehicle being switched. And then there's a maintenance cost of 13,000 and a fuel cost of 22,395. So your total budget all in was roughly 89,000. And I can pause.
No, go ahead.
Okay. And then in the white line is what we had done some assumptions for. And we assumed we would be able to get out of nine vehicles. And so you would do nine leases, you would have 12 remaining owned vehicles. The one column there that has purchased money down, we didn't assume any of that. Would, that would be the aftermarket that goes in the vehicle. So for example, your public works vehicles need plows or a service body or a toolbox. Any of that is aftermarket upfitting. And then the lease cost we assume would be about 54,000. We assumed you'd get roughly $18,000 back upon the sale of your vehicles. Assumed maintenance would come down slightly because you have newer vehicles to being 11,000. And then the fuel would be slightly less because you're getting more fuel efficient vehicles at 21,000 and your budget all in would change to about 68,000. What I did is taken that green line and showed you your leases that you had done with us. Now, this is where I did a little bit assuming because again, the vehicles don't deliver all on January 1st. They deliver when they're ready. So I went back and said, if you had gotten all your vehicles on the first of January, you actually got them throughout the model year. So you paid less than this, but this is just truing up the analysis. So again, you did the nine vehicles are recommended. The money down or the aftermarket was about 19,000. The lease cost actually came in at about 55,000. Where we actually helped out a ton was the equity. So we actually sold those vehicles and instead of getting 18,000, we got just about $42,000 for those vehicles. So we usually try to be on the conservative end. They are sight unseen. We don't go out and see them. We're assuming they're in average to rough condition so that we're conservative. Obviously you guys took good care of the vehicles. They were in great condition. So got 42,000 back. The maintenance on the vehicles came down to about 3,000. So you had a couple older vehicles causing some problems. And there was a little bit of an issue with the fuel data. I think there were some errors there. So we just assumed the same fuel, even though the assumption is that they were probably a little more fuel efficient. I just left it in as a kind of conservative assumption there. So your actual budget came out to be what would have been 56,379. So a savings from what we thought that would be on those vehicles. Similar model down on the ERV, which is again, their emergency response vehicles, your police vehicles. We did five of them, so five leased vehicles. The aftermarket we thought would be about 31,4. So that's, or I'm sorry, yeah, 31,4, that's the actual upfitting of the police vehicles, the, the lights, the sirens, the cages, anything that needs to go into them. Lease we thought would be about 59,2 and the equity we thought would be around 37,000. Maintenance 13, fuel 21 for an all in budget of 88. If we took the numbers and trued them up, which is the actual line, the green line there, you did five purchased aftermarket, the, sorry, the aftermarket was actually 31,000. So that was right on point. Lease was pretty close. It was about 58,000. Again, more money back on the vehicles, so roughly $45,000 back on the sale of the vehicles. Little bit lower maintenance cost left in the same assumed full fuel. And the budget came down to 76,9. So significant savings on both sides of it from what we thought. The goal, when we do that model is to make it conceptual, but also try to make it a little conservative so that we, when we do deliver your vehicles, we either get lower on the acquisition cost or higher on the resale side of it. Any questions?
So $23,000 swing.
Yes.
Sounds as though the chip matter has not affected the deliveries.
Well, this is 2020. If you ask, I believe the fire chief, is that who's waiting?
Correct.
You ask that person who is waiting for their F-150, they will tell you differently. So that's what, that we're actually ahead of the curve with, with Chief and Cindy trying to plan for model year 2022. You've read it in the news, there are microchip shortages. There is rubber shortages. There is foam shortages. Basically every and any piece you can put into a vehicle, there's a shortage here. What that means is I, as a professional, would not recommend buying a vehicle if you didn't have to off of a dealer lot because that's where the inflation is just crazy. The good news is that we factory order. So we get vehicles directly through the manufacturer and you're just seeing a slight price increase, but you're seeing a large increase in values on your vehicles on the backend. So we are trying to stay as proactive as possible to make sure that you stick with the tenure plan, replace the vehicles. It is made, meant to be a fluid plan. So So we do make changes. Cindy and Chief can probably attest to that. If a vehicle doesn't make sense to do this year, we'll shift it to another year, hold a vehicle. And it's, again, it's meant to be a little fluid so that whatever makes sense for East Hemphill's the best.
Awesome. Any other questions to the board?
So I'm just trying to reconcile this with the memo that we got. And so I understand correctly, we did better than what we thought. And the way I read the memo was we didn't do quite as good. Did I misread the memo?
Yes. Did I write a memo?
The email.
Email.
It was an email.
Yeah, it was, I think you, I misread it the same way. And I had to go back and look at the data because I knew it was wrong. I think, I think you did it well. I read it wrong.
Okay.
Like I was talking to my wife.
And that is, we did $23,000 better than what was budget.
Right. So if you look at each individual area, again, we spent a little more on aftermarket and a little, slightly a little bit more than we anticipated on the lease. That was just a, it comes down to just the right, the different types of vehicles. We did some public works vehicles that needed some heavy aftermarket. But when that happens and you spend more on vehicles upfront, they're worth a lot more on the backend. So it's kind of equals itself out. That's why it's meant to be conceptual. But again, we try to get as close as we possibly can. So yes, you did better on both avenues of the vehicles, the ERV and the non ERV.
Thank you.
And we expect next year to be even better on the resale side of it for the reasons we talked about. Supply and demand is challenging right now.
Any other questions to the board? Anybody from the audience? Okay, seen none. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Marcy.
Well, we did five presentations and hearings in 45 minutes. Let's see if we keep this going. We're going to actually get on to our normal regular agenda items. And our first agenda item is the consent agenda, the purpose of the consent agenda. It's approved routine items that usually require very little debate or discussion. So with that, I'll open up the consent agenda.
Can there be an explanation on the golf court report of the miscellaneous costs, miscellaneous revenue between 2019 and 2021? By memory, it was $19,000 in 19 and about $3,000 in this year. I'm unsure what the miscellaneous cost would be in the golf course revenue. 19,000 seems like a lot in an annual, but I don't know without the manager here, we can have an answer to that, but it just jumped out at me as a pretty significant variance.
Yeah, I can find that answer out for you.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion of the board?
The, the yeah, the reductions in escrow amounts for projects by David Miller's report state road commerce center continues to be a challenge in their getting things in to conformance. And I want to express appreciation to David Miller for dealing with this. There has to be frustration in being called out and then finding that things seem to be not well taken care of and without really an intent to conclude them. Similarly, Wilson Avenue, though maybe not quite as an extent, I did notice in this narrative reference to an automatic annual increase in escrow, something I'm not aware of. But it appears that there could be a way to encourage firms to conclude and get, get these projects cleaned up. Can someone give me some definition of that?
Yes, Mr. Lefever, the 10%. It's allowed by the Pennsylvania municipality's planning code and our ordinances. And we incorporate it into our development, developers agreements. So it's actually every year, once a financial security, a letter of credit. And Susan, I may need your help on a bond because I don't know how it specifically works for a bond. But for a letter of credit specifically, every year, a 10% of the original financial security is in, is added to that letter of credit. So that helps with inflation to adjust for costs associated with those public improvements.
I believe I read here though, that it was waived on the Commerce Center. And
And I believe that was the bondage, that was a bonding issue.
Yeah, it's easier to get that automatic increase into a letter of credit than a bond, which a bond is
Yeah, bond is a bond.
Yeah.
Okay, well, at least I have some more information about that. Thank you.
Okay, any more discussions of the consent agenda? Okay, I'm going to be breaking this into two votes because I am conflicted on one vote. So I will entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda minus item F. Okay, motion for Mr. Lefever, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Weaver, Ms. Switzer, please poll the board.
Mr. Weaver.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
Mr. Lefever.
Aye.
Mr. Wigglesworth.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye, aye, seven, five, nothing. And now entertain a motion to adopt item F of the consent agenda. Okay, motion for Mr. Wigglesworth, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Bennett, Ms. Switzer, please poll the board.
Mr. Weaver.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
Mr. Lefever.
Aye.
Mr. Wigglesworth.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Abstain. So we have four ayes and one abstention. Next, we'll move on to action items and we're going to move on to development services. And we're going to basically talk about first couple items from the hearing that we just had. The first item is Lime Springs Square lots two and 12 rezoning of Embassy Drive consideration of ordinance 2021-05. It was discussed in the public hearing earlier today and there was no public comment minus one. So is there any discussion in the board at this point? Anybody from the audience? Seen none? So I entertain a motion to adopt warrants 2021-05 to amend the East Hemphill Township zoning map, changing the zoning classification for portions of Lime Springs Square Lot Two from enterprise zone to regional Commerce Center zone. Okay, a motion for Mr. Bennett, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Weaver, Ms. Switzer, please poll the board.
Mr. Weaver.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
Mr. Lefever.
Aye.
Mr. Wigglesworth.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye, aye, seven, five, nothing. Next up, we have here, the Lime Springs beverage liquor license transferred to 320 Rose Town Road and its consideration of resolution 2021-31. Is there any board comment at this point? Again, this is covered in the hearing that was earlier tonight. Is there any public comment? Okay, I see none. I'll entertain a red motion to adopt resolution 2021-31, approving the transfer to liquor license number R13203 in East Hemphill Township.
So moved.
Okay, motion for Mr. Lefever, do I hear a second?
Second.
Uh, second for Mr. Weaver, Ms. Switzer, please poll the board.
Mr. Weaver.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
Mr. Lefever.
Aye.
Mr. Wigglesworth.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye, aye, seven, five, nothing. Next up, we have 701 Stony Battery Road Final Plan Resolution 2021-32 to accept additional right of way for Stony Battery. Mr. Beck.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Double duty right now.
Yes, I'm trying to bring it up on the screen right now. Bear with me. The actual exhibit.
It's much easier when Diane does it.
I kind of got used to it after Monday night. Although Nate helped, he did most of the talking. On the screen is the exhibit for, this is related to 701 Stony Battery Road and the final plan for the warehouse. And before you gentlemen, is the acceptance of the additional right of way for Stony Battery Road. Based off staff review, township solicitor, township engineer reviews. Before you are the deed of dedication and the resolution for a fee simple acceptance of the right of way. And staff is recommending acceptance of the deed of dedication and adoption of the resolution.
Okay, any discussion of the board? I think one relate but not relate question is just about the status of the trails going at this point along there. Since we're talking about right of way, which is where the trails are going to be.
So interesting, interestingly enough, the developer for 701 has some timelines to meet and is going to be selling 701 to the same owner of 601. So staff is working on addressing the installation of the trails for 601 and 701 at the same time as a way to pitch cost savings and economies of scale. Where the developer for 701 catalyst currently is moving forward to record 791 and will be putting in the trail as a part of their construction.
We have a rough timeline when that might, would that be a fall project before the paving season ends or?
I couldn't answer that because I'm not, I'm not quite up to date on their current schedule for 791.
Okay, any discussions of the board? Anybody from the audience? Okay, seen none. I will entertain a motion to adopt resolution 2021-32, accepting the addition right of way for Stony Battery Road as part of the East Hemphill Township Public Road System. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Commission, Mr. Bennett, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Wigglesworth, Ms. Switzer, please poll the board.
Mr. Weaver.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
Mr. Lefever.
Aye.
Mr. Wigglesworth.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye, aye, seven, five, nothing.
Just add to Mr. Beck, if during that conversation with the school year starting, it would be nice if it could be done in the fall before winter's done.
We have some, some other considerations. The, the trail for north of the self-storage, that could be, take some time because we have to actually acquire some easements or right of way. And then calling in the six month note for the self-storage facility. So we have to give them enough time, however, put them on notice. And we're, we're doing our best, Mr. Wigglesworth, and we're shooting for the fall as well.
Okay, so next up, we will move on to seal coating paving contracts. Stewart Tate for $56,702.98. Mr. Madonna, I thought I saw you on Zoom there. Yes, I do. So floor is yours.
This would be our like seven year cycle for the particular roads with the seal coating. It is the, some of the outlying roads that have very low volumes to them and they are showing signs of wear. And we have done some patching in preparation for this. And we would just like to get that in here before the end of the paving season.
How'd we do with prices, square yard price for this year with the spike in oil right now?
Actually was lower than I anticipated. I think this came in at like, I think it was a dollar sixty something a square yard. And I was anticipating a dollar ninety a square yard. So for some reason, our paving and our seal coating this year have both been lower than, than expected. So I think we did very well.
Good. Any discussion of the board? Have none? Anybody from the audience? Seen none? Motion to award the seal coating paving contract to the low bidder Stewart Tate from York, Pennsylvania at price of $56,702.98. Do I hear a motion?
Show me.
Motion, Mr. Weaver, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Wigglesworth, Ms. Switzer, please poll the board.
Mr. Weaver.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
Mr. Lefever.
Aye.
Mr. Wigglesworth.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye, aye, seven, five, nothing.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we had the Day Spring Christian Academy noise variance request for fireworks presentation on, on August 1st at the WJTL Junction Roadside. Mrs. Switzer.
So they are having a special event at WJTL being the, the Day Spring Christian Academy is having it at WJTL. They are asking for nine to 10 minute fireworks presentation on Sunday, August the 1st. Approximate time is from 9:15 to 9:30. I just put in a, or I just put in a letter to, on your agenda that shows that they did notify the neighbors in the area. So everything should be taken care of and it needs a variance from the noise ordinance.
Any, any concerns, anything reached the office at this point?
No, I think they've done it in the past in terms of events and they've been very respectful.
WJTL's not a good job in the past, so.
Yeah.
Any comments to the board?
Close to home.
And for you it is. You can enjoy the view.
The show.
Anybody from the audience? Okay, seen none. I entertain a motion to approve a variance to the noise ordinance to allow fireworks presentation at WJTL at Junction Road on August 1st, 2021 from 9:00 to 9:30 PM as discussed tonight. Uh, motion from Mr. Bennett, second from Mr. Lefever, Ms. Switzer, please poll the board.
Mr. Bennett. No, sorry. Mr. Weaver.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
Mr. Lefever.
Aye.
Mr. Wigglesworth.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye, aye, seven, five, nothing.
Thank you.
Next, we had honor item, the fee schedule update, but we have that crossed out, so.
We have that crossed out. We went through John and I, his department and, and did some significant review of our fee schedule. We looked at neighboring municipalities and we had discovered an error in, in the fee schedule that was presented to you. So we'd like to table that and bring it back to you in August and actually go through it.
Okay, I entertain a motion to table.
So moved.
Okay, motion for Mr. Bennett, do I hear a second? Second from the chair, Ms. Switzer, please poll the board.
Mr. Weaver.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
Mr. Lefever.
Aye.
Mr. Wigglesworth.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye, aye, seven, five, nothing.
Thank you.
Next up, we have the Hemphill Fire Department Purchase Resolution 2021-20 or 33 to ratify decision to purchase and move forward with municipal capital finance lease, 10-year lease at 2.7% to finance the lease of an E1 pumper for the Hemphill Fire Department. Ms. Switzer.
So this has been in the works for about two years. Hemphill Fire Department has worked very closely with John Cotmire, the chief fire official that we hired recently. And they have come up with this piece of apparatus. They have requested permission to purchase it. This is be a purchase by the township. It's going to be owned by the township. It's a 90/10 funding scenario. 10% is coming from the fire company, 90% is coming from the township. It's a 10-year lease, 2.75%. And a resolution to ratify the decision to purchase it and also to enter into the lease is necessary.
Okay. Anything from our public safety group?
Kudos to Mr. Cotmire for his efforts in diving right into this. And he significantly redirected the effort to what I believe will be a much better piece of equipment and an agreement and worked well with the Hemphill Fire Company. So kudos to him.
I do like that we're resolving that past issue of ownership if we're paying for it.
Yes.
So I appreciate that that's been resolved too.
Yep.
Okay, anything else from the board? Anybody in the audience? Seen none. Garantia motion to adopt resolution 2021, ratifying the decision to purchase and move forward with a municipal capital finance lease for the E1 pumper for the Hemphill Fire Department as discussed. Do I hear a motion?
Show me.
Okay, a motion for Mr. Weaver, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Wigglesworth, Ms. Switzer, please poll the board.
Mr. Weaver.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
Mr. Lefever.
Aye.
Mr. Wigglesworth.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye, aye, seven five nothing. Next up, we have our pension plans policy adjustment per recommendation from Pension Review Board. Bullet one is update the mortality tables to public safety table using MP twenty twenty. Second bullet is reduce the long-term interest rate earnings from seven and a half percent to seven percent. And the third bullet is to reduce the projected salary scale from four and a half percent to four percent, Ms. Switzer.
So the last meeting, we, uh, made an announcement, I believe it was the last meeting or the one before, that, uh, our pension plans are doing very well. The funding liability is at a very good percentage, and now is an optimal opportunity to adjust these actuary assumptions. At the recommendation of our, um, financial advisors, Gerard. And we could do everything, we could do some of it. His recommendation is to do all three scenarios, so the recommendation before you is scenario three. Which includes the mortality table, the long-term interest rate, and the salary scale adjustments. This is also discussed by the pension committee and the same recommendation that scenario three should be adopted.
Um, we've talked about this at length at this point, so. I do think one thing that'd be interesting is I think we'll probably in six months be revisiting this too, because I think we're. In a little uncharted territory now that inflation has now been unbottled a little bit. Which is, uh, gonna probably adjust bullet number two and bullet number three in ways where we're not anticipating right now yet. Uh, but right now is what our financial planners have advised, and they've given us really good advice at this point.
They certainly have, and, uh. It keeps us on track to attain the goals that we've set for the, for the pensions.
It doesn't hurt to be conservative with our investments, so. So, any discussion of the board? Anybody from the audience, seeing none? We will, uh, entertain a motion to advise Gerard Pension Services to update the mortality table to the public safety table using the MP twenty twenty scale. Reduce the long-term interest rate earnings to seven percent and reduce the project, projected salary scale to four percent for both the police. And the non-uniform pension plans, so I hear a motion.
So moved.
Motion for Mr. Bennett, second from the chair, Ms. Switzer, please poll the board.
Mr. Weaver.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
Mr. Lafever.
Aye.
Mr. Wigglesworth.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye, aye, seven five nothing.
Thank you.
Now we move on to old business, is there any old business for the board? Seeing none, new business for the board. Seeing none. We're doing an amazing job right now. If we keep this going, Mr. Lafever, the floor is yours, Traffic Commission, the floor.
Okay, well, we had a Traffic Commission meeting this evening, and, uh. One of the discussions was that our speed monitor equipment is up and running, and we anticipate being able to do. As many as four studies a month, uh, with the double battery, uh, inventory that we have. Chief Skiles and the Police Department are providing us a monthly report. On how we are, uh, addressing roadways that are. Found to have speeding concerns and traffic matters, and we will prioritize those that need to be and. When necessary, involve McMahon Associates to advise us on ways to do that. One area in particular concerned is Spring Valley Road where there's a straight stretch. And the, the data we've gathered has shown that, um, there's some significant speeding because the roadway will support it. And so we're looking for guidance from McMahon as to how we can best, um, discourage speeding there without providing. Accident, uh, factors that might result from some inappropriate measures. We've been able to eliminate a Wheaton Avenue concern where the speed studies, uh, showed evidence that eighty-five percentile. Are driving basically at the posted limit. And, uh, and, uh, that, that area is satisfactory. There's still some need for input from Pine Tree Way and Indian Springs, and that's forthcoming. And we'll have that for next month, so, um. We also looked at and approved the next, uh, level of signage for, um, Windermere in Landis Farms across the way. Including stop signs and warning signs for a raised portion of the trail that goes through there. And, uh, we are posting no parking there, actually the, the developers posting them, and we'll see, uh. If that follows what occurred elsewhere at Landis Farms or does not, and we'll deal with it accordingly. We had felt we had success on Nistley Road where, uh, some measures seemed to be bringing results. But then there was a bit of a different opinion, and I guess that's going to be atypical of how this goes on and on and on and, and. But we are optimistic that with a matrix of streets and monitoring them, we will be able to improve upon the situation. So that's the report.
Kind of doing what we're trying to do with Public Works, prioritize the storm drainage projects, prioritize paving projects, now we're going to prioritize. The traffic calming projects. Good.
Exactly.
Anything else for the board on this, on that report? Take a good job, guys. Next, we'll move on to Development Services Project Report, Mr. Beck.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, staff met with the planning group today to go over the sign ordinance amendment, uh, that is moving forward. And I should have a, uh, more of an update for you in August, uh, special, same goes for the special exception and conditional use amendment. Just updating, uh, the supervisor's approved time extension for the final plans for, uh, Penn State Health of Brookside at the six-two-twenty-one meeting. Seven oh one Stony Battery Road. In addition to the supervisors accepting the right-of-way dedication, the final plan was recorded, the building permit was issued, construction has begun. And, um. It's moving in the right direction finally, and it's good to see the, the project come to fruition. Going on to seven ninety-one, the developers now have seven oh one behind them, they have full steam ahead on seven ninety-one. And they should have the plan recorded in, um, sometime this month. Traditions America, uh, the developers working on recording, uh, the phase three final plan after the board approved, uh, phase three plan at the June third meeting. I should say June second meeting, uh, where the supervisors also approved the Knoll Road Cluster Development Preliminary Plan. And then, uh, at the June sixteenth meeting, the supervisors approved, uh, conditional use for a billboard ad, um, on Closer Drive. They, uh, from staff's understanding, will be applying to zoning hearing board for certain relief. Uh, related to, uh, most likely dwell time. The Sheet Store, uh, the supervisors approved a, um, waiver of land development for a relatively minor building, uh, renovation. Project for the Sheet Store on Columbia Avenue. We received the, um, fee in lieu of contributions for the preliminary plan and final plan today. And the building permit should be issued, issued either tomorrow or Friday. In addition to the supervisors approving the rezoning for lots two and twelve and the liquor license transfer for three twenty Worth Town Road tonight. I'm happy to report we did receive, uh, the final plan application for the three buildings for lots two and twelve. And finally, um. Township engineer and staff met with, um, RGS to discuss a project for Woodcrest Villa. Woodcrest Villa has, is in the process of settling on the, the lone residential property that they surround on Harrisburg Pike. And they will be moving forward with a law consolidation plan and a revised final plan to expand what they're calling Camellia Place. And that's going to include ten duplexes or five duplexes, ten total dwelling units, which is a change from, um, the original. Um, revised plan for phase four, four through seven, which was triplexes and quadplexes. But, uh, we anticipate receiving that plan within the next two months. Uh, that concludes my project report. Also have a quarterly report for MS four. The Stormwater Management Plan Review and Assessment Annual Report will be completed with staff in October, November. Which will require editing of some of the MCM plans and yearly stormwater, uh, management plan schedule. The annual report draft is complete for sta, it was, is complete for staff review, and, um, it will be ready for submission of the annual report in early September. Twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one Permit Year Enforcement Actions Burger King Level Two. We had, we were dealing with a sewer, sewer overflow issue that was draining onto the neighboring car dealer property that has been addressed and corrected. All other issues that were, um, that we have encountered were dealt with on an educational basis, which we call a level one enforcement. Or something, uh, more insignificant. Moving forward for the next quarter, wet weather outfall discharge characterations, um. They will continue to do, um, inspections as weather allows. They were waiting for steady rain for at least an hour, ideally an overnight start and an all-day weekday rain to align with lab hours of operation and sample hold times. They're finalizing the quadrant four BMP inspections and spill control procedures, erosion control techniques, and rain garden maintenance. Will be some of the SOP or Public Works Training in the next quarter. And then, um, there's working on a few projects with staff. And discussion with the Lancaster Clean Water Partners, uh, specifically the Nistley Road Bio Retention Basin. And if there's any questions or concerns for DMA that, uh, you gentlemen would like staff to pass along, please let me know. Thus concludes my reports.
Any questions from Mr. Beck?
Couple of questions, uh, on the Cloister Drive billboard that dates, uh, not that it's a big deal, but the, the, the date's not correct there.
Yes, I, I apologize for that.
That's no, that's no problem. Are there any additional planning documents available on the sign ordinance? I have two, received two, uh, are there any, is there anything new?
We do have the, uh.
The table, you have the table and the draft?
I have the table.
And that's what I have.
We have the solicitors' comments as well.
Yeah.
Okay, that's it. And then, uh, then lastly, from a, um, a fee, and this gets back to the fee schedule. Are we also looking at evaluating the fees associated with wireless, um, uh, facilities, uh, given the changes in the, uh, state?
Those.
Regulatory standpoint?
When House Bill sixteen twenty-one was approved, they basically, um. Align their fees with the FCC rolling, which is what our ordinance already permits, and which is what our fee schedule that you gentlemen approved last year permits. We're at the maximum we can in charge for fees based off the FCC rolling.
Okay, all right, it's fine, just want to clear my mind. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
Where's the Nistley Road Bio Retention Basin? That's where it run right up the street, isn't it?
It's a, it's a project that staff is currently looking at. Possibility of doing with its, is it ARA or ARP, ARP? The, uh, COVID recovery money?
Oh, ARPA.
ARPA. So we're looking at the, the property that's off of Nistley Road across from the church and, um, Turkey Hill as a possible location for a, um. A stormwater basin. I know some of you gentlemen remember, a number of years ago, I think it was two thousand seven, two thousand eight, when discussions about doing a residential development. And the township doing a stormwater facility to better market the property there. So there's always been an intention of doing some sort of stormwater facility at that property. And then all the, also the property that's just farther south, because of the nature of that property, being in a wetlands condition really leaves it, um, undevelopable.
And that, that funding source. This would address the, uh, the flooding issues that occurred during tropical storm week. Uh, it's significant, mostly the flooding that occurred, uh, during that storm that incurred in Mill Creek. So that will help with some of the issues that occurred by addressing upstream waters.
The funding source we're looking at is not ARPA, it's, uh, Clean Water, Lexer Clean Water Partners. Is where the funding source is for that particular basin.
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, um, they're, they're actually, um. Very impressed with some of the work that we're doing with the MA, and they're, uh, very interested in our projects, not only with the Nistley Road track, but also. With the golf course and, um, the Hark property.
Any other questions? Okay, Ms. Switzer, floor is yours, manager's report.
So Centerville Road, uh, safe to say that we're still working through the right-of-way process. This project is a long-term project, so it's, it's a process. Yeah, okay, that sounds good. The Church Street paving, I noted in my report that I am trying to take a long shot here and trying to get funding for those sides and sidewalk and curbing on Church Street. It's potential, we'll see what happens with that. Old Worth Town Road.
I just said pause on that. At least we're not paying for handicap ramps, right?
No, that is off the table now.
Good, thank you.
Yes. It's miraculous how that happened. Uh, Old Worth Town Road, that is actually making some significant gains, and that's probably going to be a spring, uh, project for next year. Farmingdale Road, we recently received a Greenlight Go Grant for two hundred and one thousand, seven hundred dollars. So that project right now, uh, is sitting at, we have high real estate money which was paid of one million, one ninety-one. We got a multimodal transportation grant for nine hundred and three. And then the Greenlight Go Grant puts us to a total of two million, three hundred and eighty-five thousand, seven hundred dollars for the project. The project's anticipated to be one, almost one point seven million. We've already expended four hundred and fifty-four on engineering fees, so, um, we roughly have available. One million, nine hundred and thirty thousand dollars for a one million, six hundred and. Seven million project, so that funding for that project is looking very good.
Are we sure it's one point six million dollars? Not to question that, but that seems a little high.
That's, that's what the, uh, engineer provided to me for the MTF agreement, one point six.
Include engineering in it too, though? That sounds more, that would include all expenses.
Which was already.
I was, I was looking at this being just roughly about a million-dollar-plus project when you look at two intersections.
Yeah, yeah, you're right. That does include engineering, which is already paid. Yeah.
We are, we're going to be sitting on roughly about nine hundred thousand dollars plus after this project's done.
Right. State Road is moving along, um, things are opening up, uh, paving's going to be happening probably sometime shortly to put the surface coats on those, uh, two areas. Howland Street, Street Bridge, there's still a little bit outstanding. We have some arborvitae that need to be planted. That's going to be done in the fall.
Are they going to do that Solanga Sign project or whatever they're playing on during the hills?
No, no one's reached out yet. So I don't know what they're waiting for, maybe.
I eagerly await to see what's going to get built there.
The Dairy Road Bridge, uh, McMahon is working on the grant application for that, uh, bridge replacement. That's due at the end of the month. The vacancies that we had for Public Works and Admin Assistant and Planning Department have been filled. Those are being hired, and they should be. The admin assistant's starting next week, and the Public Works vacancies there starting the end of the month. The Industrial Development Authority vacancy, uh, the, the board asked me to reach out to the former applicants to see if there was any interest. Mr. Ryan said definitely yes. Mr. Spangler, Mr. Rush said yes, but. Not as enthusiastically, uh, same with Josh Boltby, uh, yes, if we need him. I also reached out to Harry Kinsey, who is also the, on the Pension Plan Committee Group, and he has also expressed interest. So, um, it's not an urgency to appoint that position, but. At this point, you have some names, and maybe we can put that on the agenda for August fourth. ARP funds, we received half of the two point, almost six million now, and we are having other committee. Uh, meetings in anticipation of then having an admin finance meeting to discuss how that, those funds will be expended. And again, that's going to be a process, but something that we actually have to start doing. The lending library at the park has been installed. It's in the, uh, the, uh, covered bridge, been received very well. The, uh, two thousand twenty census number should be out in August. You heard about the Enterprise Fleet Program. The new website is up and running. I don't know if you had a chance to look at it. We do have some tweaks to make. We have some connections to make, but overall, it's up and running and, um. Doing what it needs to do. There are two group reports that I had, uh, Public Works Group met on the twenty-fifth. And just to report out that they are taking a global approach to facilitate the movement of trucks in the township. The, uh, Planning Department and the, the, um, Police Department have worked together to provide recommendations to move forward and are being reviewed by the group. Existing truck routes do not have valid studies to justify restrictions. To create valid restrictions will require studies to be performed. Also discussed is, is the need to take on additional maintenance responsibilities for alleyways. That contain stormwater facilities currently, one between Hempland and Elizabeth. So the, the truck routes, um, throughout the township need to be looked at. The studies that have been done are old, some not properly done, some just outdated. At some point in time, you'll see before you a recommendation by that committee of. What approach they want to take. We're not quite there yet. We're still doing some more additional research, but just know that there's work in progress behind the scenes. The Public Safety Group, we've. The Public Safety Group, we've talked about already regarding the pumper. That was really the focus of that meeting. I also attended some other meetings that I mentioned in my report. Meeting was with West Hemphill and Hemphill Area Rec Association to discuss an agreement similar to what West Hemphill has currently regarding recreational program and park maintenance. That's now in the hands of Jeff Book at Hark to do his analysis to see if the numbers would work for him. The Amos Her Foundation, something significant to mention is that Millie Brubaker has resigned her position as kind of the do-all person for that foundation. They're kind of ignoring her resignation. But that does provide a significant hole that's going to need to be filled with someone from the foundation board. She fears that's not going to happen, so she has some concerns that the foundation may start to flounder. So, I just bring that to your attention. I mentioned before the stormwater funding and the look at the Bio Retention Basin, you called it, that was discussed. Let's see. Did attend the PSAT's town meeting regarding ARP funding, but more importantly, Act sixty-five, which Chairman Russell had mentioned previously at our meetings, was a new amendment to the Sunshine Law, which now requires the township or any municipality to post their agendas twenty-four hours in advance. So, those agendas will be posted on our website per the Act sixty-five, which is what was acquired. Any changes to the agenda within that twenty-four period or at the meeting would need to be approved by the Board of Supervisors before it occurs, which is what we're doing now. We have done that for several months. And then if that amended agenda is approved, that agenda then needs to be posted the next business day. Lastly, the Greater Lancaster Heritage Goat Path, well, path, which is also affectionately known as the goat path. John has a map up there for you. And this, I'm just bringing to your attention because it involves the the... Yeah, what's that trail called? The Simon Foundation Project.
And also the...
Conestoga Creek.
Little Conestoga, Watershed Alliance.
Yeah, so, the goat path, which is actually in Upper Leacock and East Lampeter. I don't know how to use this thing. That is the old roadbed that was to do a bypass around something. I can't remember what was a bypass around. And so, it's a very wide swath of road that there's nothing in it. So, East Lampeter has challenged and promoted creating a path, actually even a buggy path in that corridor. They've gotten funding. They're going after that. And then Lancaster City thought, oh, well, let's continue it on and move it into the city, which is the center section. And then what affects East Hemphill is the western portion of the project, which involves the Little Conestoga Creek project and ties into some of our existing networks. There you go. So, the Farmingdale Trail is involved. Lexwama is involved. F&amp;M's involved. LGH is involved regarding a potential trailhead, which hasn't been finalized yet. But everything is kind of working together and gelling together. And I just wanted to bring it to your attention. There's nothing, no action or anything like that, just information that trails are being expanded.
So, is LGH, when they're saying gonna be involved, are they actually gonna bring money along with their involvement? Since they've been kind of stingy on actually paying for those type of projects?
They have indicated that they will pay for the trailhead, the parking area or use an existing parking area. They talked about the former daycare area, the building there. So, it might not be too much. Mrs. Joder wasn't committing yet to them.
Yeah, they're good at talking the talk, but then when they actually got paid for it, it went on to people's money.
Yeah. Lexwama has stepped up to make that connection at that one black dot to cross the railroad right there, that they're willing to make that connection to get the trail across the railroad. So, that was significant.
Lexwama's done a very good job with trails over the years.
And then they're dealing with F&amp;M to get that interconnection there at Clayton Road. And around the back there, they have a lot of, a big field system there across from the transfer station. So, a lot of good people, a lot of good projects working to the betterment of all to get this trail system in.
So, a buggy trail from East Lampeter to East Hemphill.
Yeah. Well, not to East Hemphill, just on the goat path. And they want to change the name of the goat path. I kind of like the goat path, but...
It will always be the goat path.
So...
I guess we're Goat Path West.
There you go. And that's all I have to report unless there's questions.
Any questions for the manager?
Just one quick question on the Amos Her Foundation. Does the foundation own the property that the building is on, or does the township?
Township owns the property. They own the content.
They also provide a lot of volunteer hours maintaining site. So, it's not a group we're gonna want to see go away.
Like many of the boards, they're aging out and the need for new blood.
Let's have that as a discussion item in our next Parks and Recreation.
Okay? Anything else?
Just briefly, the Fire Commission met last evening, and a significant development, I believe, was that we established three working group subcommittees and staffed them that are for staffing retention, apparatus, and fundraising. And so, we'll try and get some grassroots input and participation and do what we're supposed to.
Good, that's awesome. Anything else? Well, that was two meetings brought into one, and we did it in just under ninety minutes with the first forty-five minutes dedicated to hearings and public presentation. So, congratulations all for keeping it efficient. We will adjourn the meeting at eight-thirty-two. Thank you.
Staff does kind of like having one meeting a month every once in a while.
I kind of like not meeting on the Fourth of July.